All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 6th. It's the monthly meeting of the Planning Board. If anyone could stand and say, "Pledge allegiance." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. The first item on the agenda is special permit site plan approval modification. Public hearing continued for 927 Main Street. And Nicole, if you could read the...
Town of Millis offers the Planning Board notice of public hearing in accordance with provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11, Mass. General Law. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Tabitha Galding, Total Image Solutions, 196 Theater Road, South Hill, Virginia, 23970. Requesting modification of special permit site plan approval for changes in signage at 927 Main Street, mobile, Millis, Mass., MAP 23, Parcel 110. Copy of the application and site plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right. And who's going to be representing? Okay. So if you want it, you have to come on up to the microphone and identify yourself and you can let us know what's...
Hello. I'm Richard Biggins, representing Total Image Solutions. Right now, they are proposing to change the existing gas price change changer numbers on the existing signage. Roadside sign has four price bots. They want to reduce it to two and change them so they're LED illuminated, both sides, both of which are controlled wireless with inside the building just for a cleaner, updated look and as well as at the pumps. They have proposed the red little triangle flag that mounts over the existing pumps. I believe originally they asked, it was supposed to have a graphic on it that had the Mobil Synergy logo. But I believe the excess verbiage on those was not approved, but the structure was. So the graphics have been removed, but they'd like to still keep the existing red fixture over the existing pumps to just keep in line with the Mobil brand.
All right. And we had our consultant take a look at that. Mike, do you want to walk through the... They did some revisions for your review letter.
Yep. And Mike Carter, GCG. So I spoke to a representative from the, I believe, the sign company. She called me to ask questions on it. So our comments are basically, there's really two comments. They all kind of go back to your original approval, conditions of the original approval, which said couldn't be any new signs on the project. So the first comment was really the sign that's out there out front. One of your conditions is that it can only be white. They were proposing it as green and red. There was an email submitted to Camille that said that they would just use white instead of green and red as their numbers on the sign, which is in the package that they submitted. The second thing was, as he indicated, the triangular signs that would go right above where you pub gas. They wanted the word synergy on it. We basically commented that you said no new signs in your approval in the future. So the phone call was, well, if I don't put wording on it, is it not a sign? So really, it's up to you, you know, whether that's an issue or not.
Because typically with most of the Mobil stations, that red fixture that they put above, it just kind of goes with Mobil's brand. So that was the reasoning for it.
No. I go to Mobil, so I know. Yeah, thank you. So I think the... George, did you have any comment? Because I could look over there.
Yeah.
Okay. I think one of the things that in the original... Typically on our signs, they're supposed to be frontlit with light, not necessarily. You know, so they're looking for more of a, you know... But obviously, being able to change the price of the gas, you know, you need to have it. So I understand that. I think what we were trying to avoid as the Planning Board overall was to have, you know, we didn't want the neon pop-up signs everywhere that are lit, you know, "Come on in here and have a nice hot coffee."
Yeah, totally.
But you know, this one, this one, to me, makes sense because, you know, to have somebody who have to go out and change the, you know, the price of the gas, you know, it does make sense. I think it's a little different than, you know, what the original intent was down here, you know, on the... But I don't see, I think it's, I think we can adapt on that, I think, personally, I think. But I defer to the board to see if there's any other...
Does the, does the white stipulation still take an effect? The only reason I ask is because just with the majority, pretty much every gas station out there, red is usually the price for regular gas. Then the green usually indicates diesel.
I didn't know that. That's a good one.
That's, I mean, that's probably about every gas station out there.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Alpacas down the street.
Right.
That is a digital sign.
Correct. Yeah.
Is that white?
That is red.
I...
That's red.
It is?
Yeah, it's red. Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's red.
Yeah. So...
If they don't have diesel, then usually you don't see the green.
They have to change it. I would buy a tonic. That's not digital.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Neither, neither is the exhaust station.
Okay, so those are both...
His is backlit.
I mean, he's correct in saying, you know, red and the green, that's standard for diesel and regular.
Okay. So that's basically for us, it's, you know, you know, what do we want to, what do we want to put forth? Do we... Go ahead.
Do alpaca apply for the digital sign and do we disallow it?
I don't remember.
I believe that we, they asked for it and we asked them not to and they didn't push the issue.
Okay.
Because precedent would be important.
No, I get it. Yeah, I can't remember.
I don't think it was a denial. I think that it was, it was just part of, they read, Mike read, you know, our regulations and they didn't ask for, they didn't push the issue, if I remember correctly.
I mean, I think, I think it's what it's going to come down to is, you know, do we, do we, you know? And I mean, I can see the reasoning behind, you know, if they can sit inside and change the price of the gas, that's a lot better than having to send someone out to change it. But I don't know if that goes into, we'd have to check is, would that be, would that be in violation of our bylaw? I'd have to look at that.
I don't think it would be a change in the bylaw. I think it would be, they're asking for a waiver. And I think you could dispute the waiver.
What would you say, Mike?
I think, I think that even if it's white, you're still, you're still going to have the ability to change it inside, right?
Absolutely.
That part doesn't change. So it's really just whether you want white and, white or red and blue, red and green. It's really...
And/or digital.
Well, it's going to still be digital no matter what.
Well, hey, right now, they have standard, regular pronto letter changes. So I mean, that is currently there and approved. They'd like to update more with the modern gas stations that are around and be able to change the prices as obviously the prices change throughout the day. I mean...
You will keep them as white, right?
Originally, originally, they had asked for red and green, but I think the miscommunication of just red and green lights rather than just red distinguishes regular gas and green distinguishes diesel. If they could, if they could get, if they could be granted that, that would be great. If not, they're willing to accept the white default.
So, Mr. Chair, the sign itself is the same size? It's not going to be...
Nothing's changing with the signage itself. And the prices drop from showing four prices down to just two.
Two, right. Which makes it a little bit more neater. And my other question would have been, is there any other plans on cleaning up the site or the building?
I personally have no...
I think, yeah, they just went for signs, so, but, yeah.
And George is going to ask the next question.
Go ahead, George.
Well, the biggest thing is, is this thing shut off when the station shuts down?
If you want it to, it absolutely will. If there's a stipulation to that, that it has to be off during non-operational hours.
I was on the board when we did this station and we were very adamant about a lot of things. We wanted the signage. That's why none of the three canopies have any signage on it. And you don't need it. The comment was that if you're driving down the road, you know it's a Mobil station. You don't need fancy lights on your canopy. I don't have any problems with a digital green and red sign as long as, you know, if they open a six, they go from six to whatever, nine or 10, and it doesn't flash.
No, no, no flash movement or anything like that.
I have a little concern with a 40-inch wide sign that says synergy, that nobody even knows what the hell it is.
Right, that's off. They get rid, they pull it off. That was in the review comment.
So we're just, we're dealing with a digital sign.
Yeah. And like I said, I mean, as much, you know, I mean, I know what the intent was for us, for the downtown, is to try to keep it, you know, not glitzy. But, you know, realistically, you can see the business owner's side of, you know, having to send someone out there to change the thing, you know? And I know how they change the gas prices, like, every day, so...
And I believe they were still asking for the red blade with just no wording. Just as a fixture to at least keep some of the visual branding that Mobil has, obviously without adding the wording to it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
There's a, across the top, George, they have a red thing that goes across. You know, the pump on it has this red thing that they had across there, saying that they still want to put that in, but just no synergy on the top. So you'll have...
No, no wording at all.
You'll have the pump with a red blade on it, which...
We're in the digital age, so...
Yeah, go ahead.
I am still stuck on the non-compliant, the lit sign. I mean, it's currently existing, but the wording does say any new or replacement signage must be lit indirectly.
Right.
So I'm concerned that we make an exception and any storefront there that wants to put a backlit sign can have grounds to do so.
Right. So, and I kind of had that same thought, too. I would say the thing is, because I actually talked to the building commissioner earlier and what they said was if we want, we'd have to, basically, we'd have to get something on the warrant and change the bylaw if we did that. So that would be, you know, to be 100%. We, you know, if we, if we did this as an exception and then we'd have to agree as the board that we were willing to update the, you know, we'd be putting the cart before the horse, technically. You know, so the right way to do it would be to have the bylaw changed and then go ahead and, you know, approve it, so Jim...
Oh, Mr. Chair, you would leave it that you would have that they come in and they apply for a waiver, just like they're doing here.
Correct.
Because if you look at the, the gas station down here, that, that's a backlit sign. I mean, it still has a light, it's lit up, you know, from the back of it, and we did approve that. I believe McDonald's sign is, McDonald's sign itself is, has the lights inside and we approved, you know, they came in and they asked for that and we did approve that. So I don't think this is any different than...
I'd say the one difference is, to Alan's point, the one difference...
To change it all, if we just decide to change it.
Yeah, one difference is that it's a change to the sign, but the other thing is it is, you know, it does have the lights in the, in there. But like I said, to, you know, and I know, I, I think we do need to update our sign, you know, bylaw. Realistically for them, you know, it's, I think it's, it's getting us into the 21st century and we probably should have done it earlier. We just didn't get that far, so... And I understand what you're saying is I think, you know, once we open it up, then, you know, we could be, you know, we could open it up so that there are larger LED signs that are more, you know, the, you know, more pronounced than that. So, go ahead.
And this does kind of come up frequently where a lot of cities and towns don't allow, like, electronic message centers, which are considered much more geared towards signage rather than a price changer sign or something that is a little bit more informational rather than advertising per se. So that just has any weight to the conversation.
All right. Well, thank you for that.
So I'd like to make a proposal, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
If we're ready. I would approve the, but I would still, as Judge stated, I would like it between business hours, only operating during business hours. And that they, I mean, I, I would still remain with the idea of, you know, what Mike put in his comments, that they remain white. I think that that would appease Alan's, you know, question about some of it, staying uniform.
Okay. And your points well taken. I think, I think, I think we need to, I think we, as a board, need to work on our, on updating the bylaw on this. I think for this small thing, I don't mind making an exception for this, personally. That's my personal opinion. But your points well taken. Go ahead.
So when Millis Gas comes in and they want a new sign up, we're going to be okay with that?
Right. Well, that's, yeah, that's the question. Yeah, I got it. I mean, so that's, and that's what we have to think about as a board is, is, you know, once we've opened it up, then, you know, so is that something we want to do? Or do we want to push this off and have them come back after we've updated the bylaw? Because that's the other option.
I'm not a fan of waivers to bylaws.
Yeah.
We have bylaws, we have them for a reason. If we want to change the way we do business, we change the bylaws.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I get, I had that same thought. What else, anyone else in the board have a comment on that, or?
I just, I mean, we've approved, you know, out in front of the town hall, we approved the lines to put up a same type of rotating message board. And it was, again, it was what the proposal was, it was going to remain, there was not going to be any black back, it was all going to be white. And the wording, it wasn't going to be like the one up at Cho Park in Medway. It was going to be that same type of sign. And when we approved it, it was going to be, like I said, white lettering and only white lettering at the time. So each time, each person comes in and asks, and they propose for their certain property of what is best for their, their business.
And these, and these panels can't display anything outside of numerical numbers from zero to nine. So there is no, absolutely no alteration. Can't do stars, squares. It's, they're only pre-programmed to do numbers. And at what, whatever color you guys decide with, there's no changing that either because that's the way. The entire panel is designed. So it'll either be white or red and green, and that is it.
George?
I think we have to stay with the white because that's what our bylaw says. And I think you're right, we'd better review the bylaw, revisit them and either change them or leave them alone. And you know as well as I do, this is going to open a bag of worms. So we have two choices. We either allow the sign with the white lettering or we decline it and go back and change our bylaws.
Right. Go ahead.
I don't have a problem with asking them to postpone it. I do have a problem with asking any business owner to postpone it. Something definitely, I think if this board is going to decide we're not going to approve this and we are going to revisit the bylaws, I think that needs to be a top priority and it has to be done so that we can, we can get, do our best to get it for Springtown meeting because otherwise you're asking a business owner to put off something, you know, months and months in advance. I mean, months down the road.
Except the thing is, with that Camille, like, we would have, we wouldn't be able to get it for Springtown meeting, would we? I think it's too late.
It'd have to be drafted, it would have to go on a warrant, it would have to be public care and advertised. Town council would have to review it and then it has to pass a town meeting because that was a chance it doesn't.
Well, right.
We have two more meetings before the next town meeting.
Right, we only have two, but I don't know when the select board is opening the warrants. It's usually open like two weeks. And then, like I say, you'd have to get the wording and...
Well, if we knew we were doing it, we could ask, we could ask them for the place, how, police holder on, on the warrant. But what I'm saying is...
No, I get it, I get it, I understand.
We would have to.
So if we did that, so maybe we could, we're on it and we could make it just a modification to, at a minimum, we could make a modification to the, you know, the sign rule and, you know, maybe we just, we, yeah, we could do that. I don't see that. All right.
So could we tell the petitioner that we are going to attempt to change the bylaw for the May meeting and to hold off until that time?
I would bring that up to the board. So, so the thought process is if we attempt to go to modify the bylaw so we're not, and get it for the Springtown meeting, you guys, they'd have to push it off for till May.
My only problem with that is I don't think we're going to have enough time to get a bylaw written in time for asking for what this petitioner is asking for. I don't think it's asking, if we're telling him, you know, I did make the motion that we would, you know, give him the waiver as long as they stayed white. I don't see much of a difference between what's on that sign there and then what's, what we've already granted in the past. So I just don't see it getting done by May.
No, and I had the same thought. The time, the timeframe on that was, you know, that's when he was brought up, that I think that would be tight, so... All right, well, then let's just bring it to a vote and see what happens.
You'd have to...
Oh, so we have to close the public hearing. Yep. So I make a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, sorry. Are there any comments from the public? All right, thank you. All right, I make a motion to close the public hearing. All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, let's see. Jim, you want to make your motion?
I will make, remake the motion that we grant the petitioner's request for a digital sign board and two of the things would remain in place, that they would be, instead of red and green, that would be white lettering depicting the prices with the white backing. No, it can't be white backing, but it would be white letters and that it is only operational during business hours.
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded. All right, we'll do it by roll call. George?
I'll go along with Jim, yes.
Okay. Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
No.
Nicole?
Yes.
All right, I'll go aye also. But that being said, I do agree with Alan. I think we do need to, we get to revisit our bylaws.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so... All right, motion's been made and passed, so there you go.
Do you need updated outlines, resent just outline on off times?
Yeah, we can, Camille can send you something and we'll just put whatever.
Decision will have to be prepared by the town clerk.
Yeah, we'll have a decision that we'll have to make and we'll just, we'll put the time, whenever you guys are open, if you could give us those times.
Okay.
So, all right, good, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a good week.
All right. All right. Next item on the agenda is special permit with site plan approval. Public hearing continued for 121 Norfolk Road. And before that, we have to read the public notice. And before you guys present, I am going to have one other thing that happens, so...
Town of Millis offers the Planning Board notice of public hearing in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11, Mass. General Law. Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, at 7:45 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, 229, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Wireless Edge Towers 2 LLC, care of Michael R. Dolan Esquire, Brown &amp; Rubik Rudnick LLC, One Financial Center, Boston, Mass., 02111. Requesting a special permit with site plan approval under Section 12Q13CNN of the zoning bylaw of the Town of Millis for construction of 150-foot above-ground-level monopole communication tower and associated appurtenances to be located at 121 Norfolk Road, MAP 39, Parcel 43, Millis, Mass. Property owned by the Town of Millis. Copy of the application and site plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and can be reviewed at the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right. And before we get started, I'd like, I have Town Council here today. I would like Elizabeth to stand up and could you walk through what the Planning Board is allowed to discuss on this application?
For the record, Town Council is Bill Biden. Elizabeth, could you just sit there and use the microphone? Yes, thank you. So for the record, Elizabeth Leyden, Town Council. So tonight, you have before you a site plan review and special permit application for the wireless communications tower. You should be reviewing that under the bylaw and the applicable section of the zoning bylaws for site plan review and granting of a special permit. Section 704 of the Federal Telecommunications Act prohibits local authorities from regulating cell towers, site, cell tower citing based directly or indirectly on environmental impacts of radio frequency emissions that comply with applicable federal regulations. So localities can enforce generally applicable building structural, electrical, and safety codes and other laws codifying objective standards reasonably related to health and safety. However, that's not really within the purview of this board. What you can look at is just what's enumerated under your bylaws for this specific structure.
Okay, I just want to, before I disappear, I want to, so to put it in layman's terms...
Sorry.
We can review the building...
Yes.
The site, and that's our purview. Okay? So tonight, that's what we're going to talk about and that's all we're going to talk about. So any comments on anything else, we really don't have any purview over and will not comment on it. So thank you, Elizabeth. If the applicant could go ahead and present what you're, you're going to show us. Either or.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Dolan. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Brown Rudnick. Here on behalf of the applicant, Wireless Edge 2 LLC. By way of background, in May 2023, the Town of Millis issued an RFP for the lease of a portion of the town-owned two-acre parcel at 121 Norfolk Road for the installation of a telecommunications tower. Wireless Edge, a company that owns and manages wireless communications infrastructure, responded to the RFP and was the successful bidder. Wireless Edge thereafter executed a lease with the select board. Wireless Edge is proposing to build a 150-foot above-ground-level monopole-style telecommunications antenna tower within a 4,200-square-foot fenced equipment compound. In the equipment compound will be the related equipment of those carriers who locate antennas on the monopole. As you likely know, this area of Millis is a notorious gap in coverage for wireless telecommunications companies and the residents of Millis, as well as for the town's municipal and public safety communication systems. This tower will be able to support the antennas of up to six commercial wireless communications companies and the top of the tower is reserved for public safety antennas at no charge. Town fire and police are excited to have this tower erected so that they can locate their antennas and significantly improve their communications capabilities. We supplemented our application with a letter of support from the fire chief and the police chief. Wireless Edge will also assist those agencies with the installation of their antennas. Wireless Edge has also received a great deal of interest from the commercial wireless communications industry. For example, Verizon Wireless has, has expressed tremendous... For example, Verizon Wireless, uh, has, uh, has expressed tremendous interest in this site, has noted a coverage gap here for many, many years. We have submitted with our application a letter of support from Verizon and, uh, we are currently finalizing a sublease with them for antenna space on the tower. Co-locating the antennas of multiple users, uh, is spot on with the, uh, bylaw of the town as it relates to wireless communications facilities. The goal being to provide great coverage in town, but do it with as few towers as possible. This tower will achieve that goal in that a number of different carriers will be able to locate here, as well as I alluded to, the, uh, antennas of the town. With respect to any visual impact of the tower on the surrounding area, uh, it should be noted that, uh, the surrounding area, there's a dense and high tree canopy and the vast majority of the land around this, uh, property is undeveloped. Wireless Edge will also paint the tower brown so as to help camouflage, uh, the monopole with the surrounding trees. The municipal water pump property, which is the locus, uh, at which we're going to locate this facility, is also in an id- is also an ideal location for the tower, seeing as the nearest homes are all nearly at least four hundred feet away from the tower. Pursuant to FAA requirements, I do wanna note that this tower will not need to be lit. Uh, the tower facility is unmanned. It's a passive use and it will not generate any objectionable noise, odor, fumes, glare, smoke or dust. On average, it's only one or two visits, uh, per quarter for each carrier who has antennas on the tower, so there'll be uh, an insignificant amount of traffic, uh, uh, going to the facility. Wireless Edge here has applied for a personal wireless communications facility special permit pursuant to accessory use number eighteen of section five, table one, use regulations and sections thirteen N of the zoning bylaw and has also applied for site plan approval pursuant to section thirteen C of the bylaw. Uh, as we've demonstrated in our application and I hope here tonight, we respectfully submit that we believe we have satisfied the requirements for the issuance of a special permit as well as site plan approval. Uh, we believe, uh, the, the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six also supports our application. With me here tonight is a representative of Wireless Edge, uh, as well as the engineer who designed the, the proposed facility and we would be glad to answer any questions any of you may have.
Anyone on the board? Go ahead, George.
They say it's brown, but what if all the trees around it are green? Not in physicians, but you see some places down south where they physically make these poles look like trees.
Yeah, I mean, we could paint it green. Our experience.
Could you make it look like a tree?
Uh, you know, that complicates many times the, uh, the ability of the antennas to propagate an adequate signal and quite frankly, I have seen some that look good. I've seen a lot that look really bad and sometimes they look more like an eyesore than something that you would just think is a less mass, uh, of a cylindrical object.
So, Mr. Chair, I can tell you that in the, um, this has been in the works for the past fifteen years, that this location, maybe not with this, this, this person, but in all this company, but, um, the town has been very much aware of the dead zone in that area. We've looked at many locations. We looked at the High School Field as one, um, many, many, many different sites and this was, um, two times that we did a, 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 a study. You know, the town itself did, did a study. Both times we came up that this was the, the, the best site for this type of, uh, communication, for this antenna. The last, first time it went through because of the economy, went down the toilet and, um, this, you know, it came back up again. And it took us, even this process here, almost six, seven years to get us to this, where we are today.
Anyone else?
Our engineers have reviewed it. Nope. Found no problem.
Yeah, well, that's, that actually goes to have, uh, Mike. I think on, uh, so Mike, do you mind, uh, we had a couple of comments on the building. There was a few minor comments that you addressed on it, on the site, which is what we're here to review.
Okay. Um, we did a, a review of under section seven and, um, actually section eight, site plan review and, um, section, uh, special permit. And what we found generally, a couple of real com- major comments are the access road going into there is a, um, it's on a, it's on a hill, as everybody knows. It's uphill from, from the street and, um, the grades on the road as shown right now, there's been revised plans that we got last, last week, end of last week. They show a thirty percent grade, um, which is pretty steep, which is very steep. I mean, you need to have fire access. That's something that should just be determined and it could be graded, so it's not quite as steep. Um, and then they proposed, um, a stormwater basin for, um, impervious areas and, um, they basically put in their drainage calculations to be submitted later. We don't have those at this point. Then the other thing was, this is just general, looking at the most recent plans, the landscaping plan, they planted arbovites in front, um, which are trying to assume screen the fence. You're not gonna screen the pole, obviously. Um, I just did notice and I'm sure just a scrimmer's error that the arbovites were three feet tall, so, um, if you could just take a look at that. But the bigger, the main thing that our comment is the grading, it's twenty feet from the, an elevation change from the fence in the front of the, the pole to the fence in the back of the pole. Um, and they have basically, right now you have a, I don't know what the right terminology is, but you have an area where you have all your equipment, you've, one of six equipment areas. Um, and the grading doesn't detail adequately enough that you can actually, it's level and what you're gonna do. Um, you're filling, they're filling in the front, if you're looking from the street, it would be the front left corner for the first area. Um, maybe if they could discuss, if they ever did build these six pads out there, equipment pads, which I don't know if equipment pad is, comes with every different cell service, um, or whatever service it is, but if you do, that those are, those are six different pads going up in elevation twenty feet. In other words, um, the front is here and imagine twenty feet higher would be the back, back pad. So aesthetically, it's gonna be very visible from, I'm guessing it would be very visible from the, from the street, the equipment. Those are my main, two main comments, basically the drainage and the grading.
Um, with me here tonight, as I alluded to, is, uh, our engineer from Chappelle Engineering, Jim Fitzgerald. Jim, do you wanna come up and, uh, introduce yourself and, uh, uh, maybe address some of the, those comments?
Yeah, the, uh.
Oh, could you, uh, get up to the mic and identify?
I wasn't sure if you pointed at the camera or the.
And then just make me introduce yourself first.
I think this is the, uh, playing more reference.
Um, yeah, and you gotta be by the mic to.
Yeah. I'm James Fitzgerald, uh, professional engineer with Chappelle Engineering. Um, yeah, the goal was to try and build the site with the, a minimum amount of disturbance. Um, and within the industry, we've built towers on, you know, ski slope rooftops and, so the slope, it is, as, as he says, extreme. But the client wants to try and work with the topology that we have, um, and ultimately, uh, upon receiving feedback from this board, move the whole project forward and get into more granular detail about the, the drainage, drainage calculations. We basically put the, the infiltration basin in as a, um, geometric placeholder for a future design that would take into consideration those, um, the stormwater runoff details. And then as far as the individual, um, installations, each one of the commercial carriers has a different space requirement, different equipment requirement and, um, we would be going with the mantra of trying to, to minimally disturb what's there, so they would be built on concrete piers and steel frames and then the cabinets would sit in those, so we would effectively try and reduce our impervious, our increase in impervious area of the overall site. So that was a goal from the developer's standpoint.
So I think the biggest question is, is the, you know, the thirty percent grade, um, just with, in, I think we need, we would need to know that if there was, if they needed to send the, some, somebody was up there working on it, they had to send the ambulance up, that the ambulance would be able to make it up to the top of the hill. Um, that would be, you know, public safety would be my biggest concern.
Yeah, we definitely could carry the road, the access road out and away to, to make sure that the rescue vehicles could make it to the site.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
I just have one other, one other thing too, is that the fall zone for the, um, the pole basically is, it's a hundred fifty-foot pole. So you guys have a double the distance for the fall zone and then they commented back that they can design it to be seventy-five feet, if I, if I understand your letter. Um, and what it means is, it's just, there's a break point in the pole that, where it's a weak point. It's, it's not, it's weaker than the rest of the pole, so if it got, if it ever happened that it would fall, it would only be a seventy-five foot radius. The only th- comment there is that, that all falls on their parcel, except for part of it falls on the back of the lot onto the, a private property, um, about twenty feet or so. And so the fall zone extends not to the road, but into someone's private property in the back.
And that, and that's a sliver of undeveloped land that I believe is chapter sixty-one restricted right now. It's a, about a ninety-acre parcel that's undeveloped, so. Well, I think that's still, that's still somebody else's property, so I'd say that, I think that needs to be addressed. So I, I, I think the, I think the, you know, thirty percent grade is an issue of access on that. That's number one. Um, the fall zone issue, uh, you know, you have to be able to make sure that your stuff, if it falls, falls on, you know, our portion of the, the property. And then we, you know, I know you put a placeholder in for the, for the infiltration, infiltrators. You know, I, you don't, we don't, you, you guys need to have some sort of, um, at least, uh, thought that this would be approved before you spend money on it. Um, do we know the soils in that area to, to, you can look it up in, Mike, you can look that up in the book, can't you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, but do you know the soils in that area? That, I think it's all sand over there, isn't it?
Uh, I'm not sure off the top.
Okay. I think we, we would, a little, little granularity that, uh, you know, you looked up the soils in that area and said, hey, you know, it's not total clay. I, I can't believe it is, but I think we need to know that.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Is there any other comment? Oh, and by the way, the arbovites, those are deer food, so I think your need to, they, and there's all deer out there, so. Um, you might as well put lettuce out there because they'll be gone in like, in like two weeks. Um, so if you do have screening, I think we have to think of something a little better than arbovites.
Does the board have any, like, rhododendrons or?
They love those too. Yeah. Do you wanna pick another thing that they liked?
We have a tree warden that's very much into, into, uh, that stuff, so we can get.
Yeah. I, I, yeah. I'd, I'd say, but, you know, you probably wanna put something in that was gonna, it was actually gonna do something. Are there any other comments from the board?
Just like, do you feel we can approve with conditions or do we need to resolve the issues first?
Um, I think I'd like to, especially on, uh, especially on the, um, on the fall zone, I think I'd like to have. Yeah, I get it. Yeah. Go ahead, George.
Was there a butters list sent out on this?
Yeah.
There was. And, uh, I think Guy Oreo owns that land in the back. Yeah, that's part of the farm. So, and that would be in that fall zone. So, yes, it's undeveloped, but it's, it's fallen and also part of that land, which is, it's in sixty-one, but it's also, um, uh, if I remember correctly, it's, um.
It's farmed. Some of it's farmed.
They, they do farm it, but it's also protected as well.
Well, I, I think more in the, you know, on the, the fall zone is just, you know, technically we don't want the, you know, that's, we don't want to take the chance of it falling on somebody and, you know, on a private property that had their lawn chair set up there, you know what I mean? That, so.
It's tree. I mean, the, the section that they're talking about, it's all, it's all tree.
Right.
It's, it's not, I mean, anything in the surrounding area is owned by the, um, you know, the, the town hasn't moved it to the station itself.
I mean, we could do it where we, we looked at, I'm just thinking, if we, we could do it where we conditioned it so that it was, they'd have to resolve the fall zone. Like, I think, Alan, you said that earlier, um, conditioned it so we could do the, the fall zone was resolved, the grading was resolved and they gave us, why?
Because if they're bringing, if they're coming in with revised plans, we can't approve it.
Okay.
Mike, is that correct?
Okay.
Mike's also needs to review a drink, the drink, the stormwater.
We can't approve it until we have revised.
Okay, so.
There's, um, looking at the, at the plan that is here, the, that seventy-five-foot fall zone at the furthest point is twelve point nine feet, so just shy of thirteen feet from the Town of Millis's property line. Would it be conceivable to move this unit closer to the street by thirteen feet and then?
Sure. Is the twelve point nine the distance to the fence from the property line or is it that stub portion of the, I think it's the formula, correct?
Yeah, that, that.
So you haven't measured the exact.
Yeah, we would, you'd need to look at, uh, yeah, the one.
How far over would that go then? Where would seventy-five feet take us into this property? How far?
Right. Okay. So from the property line right now, we are forty-two point nine feet from the property line to the center of the pole. It's forty-three feet, so we would need to move it thirty or so feet.
Oh, okay. So that's not feasible. All right. I'm sorry. I was looking at, I guess I was.
Right. I, I, I looked at it that way too, the first time I read it. Yeah.
Okay. Would they possibly then need an easement?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's not, that would be something that they would have to figure out. You guys would have to figure out how you would do that, whether you got an easement. Would a letter of consent suffice? Uh, we'd need something, Mike, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that would be, you'd need town council's opinion.
Yeah, we need to, oh, okay. Oh, and the town council happened to be.
She just happens to be here.
Elizabeth, could you, uh, weigh in on that for us?
I think consent of a property owner would suffice.
Okay.
An easement wouldn't be necessary because it's not a permanent structure, something that'd be on the property unless it were to fall, right?
Excuse me? The last one?
The, this, we're just talking about the fall zone, correct? Right. So it's not a, a placement of a structure on the property.
Correct.
It's just the potential for it to fall. So if the property owner gives a letter of consent, I think that would satisfy.
All right. And just because the people at home, uh, probably couldn't hear that, uh, town council said that, uh, if the landowner beside it gave a, um.
Letter of consent.
Letter of.
Consent.
Consent, then they could put the tower up. They would have to, the wireless company would have to get that from them. Okay. So that takes care of that. So, um.
So I think what you need to do is get, like, the plans for the, uh, the drainage.
Yeah.
Calculations and, and answers, uh, you know, deficiency in the road.
Yeah.
And the letter and consent.
A letter and consent.
Should be able to.
Move forwards and then come back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll can, we would continue at this hearing.
Okay.
I think that the owner should take, you know, solace with the, you know, that it's ready to move on and if that's what they were, what they were tackling.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Um, so, um, do we have any questions from the audience? And, and I just wanna be clear upfront, we've already talked about the fact that we are not going to talk about the, um, the, the five G portion of this, so if you have something about the site, we're more than happy to hear you. Go ahead, Kathy.
Um, it's, you know, it's very difficult to look at plans on the website. Thank you for having that information up there. But, um, may I ask the engineer, forty-two hundred square feet, is that the size of the pad for the, the monopole?
Uh, no, that is the, the, in, the fenced-in area, uh, the security area.
And will that be all impervious or not?
No.
So do you have a question?
Uh, could we do all the, call through the chair, please?
Oh, sorry.
All the questions through the chair.
May I ask you to ask him?
You can go ahead. Go ahead and ask me the question. I'm sure you can answer.
So what is the total impervious, um, area planned for this site at present?
Um, as, as designed right now, uh, it's roughly under forty square feet of impervious.
Okay. And that includes the seven pads for the, um, electrical equipment for each of the carriers?
It does not. It, it includes the footprint of the. It does not, it, it includes the footprint of the Kason Foundation, and the piers that would hold up the one anchor tenant.
And then, the 30, the 30-degree road, could you ask if that's gonna be impervious? That driveway up?
Yeah, we can ask that question.
Yeah, it is not, it, it would be crushed down.
So, you guys, this is your expertise. So, a 30-grade, so, in terms of the building this, it's, some of these equipments are quite heavy. I mean, I was very surprised to know that the 5G antenna is like a ton and a half. So, can you get those big trucks with all that weight?
That's not our, that's not, not under our purview, so, if they can, that's up to them, they'll have to figure out how to get them up there. I mean, to, you know, not being facetious, what the owner does there to build it, to whatever our concern is, public safety, if somebody gets hurt up there, we need to make sure we get the ambulance up there. If it catches on fire, the fire department has to get up there. That's all we have, that we need to deal with. How they build it is not our problem, they could fly it in with a helicopter.
So, the, the reason I'm asking is that the whole thing is in a zone, too. So, we want to protect our water supply, we want to prevent erosion, so I'm thinking more things about the weight of that stuff going up there, eroding away at the soil on the hill. I mean, that wouldn't be under your purview to consider that in the construction?
I mean, I would, we build things all the time, I mean, so they put, they would put, you know, erosion control in, buildings are built all the time, and so they put gravel down, they build it, when they're done, they'd, you know, either put riprap or something, I mean, this is, this happens all the time.
I know, but is, so, is it normally part of the plans that are presented to you to prevent that kind of erosion?
Yeah, and Mike, so what they do is typically, what we do is they have a, pre, before you do it, they have to do erosion controls, they have to have it set up with showing how they would do the, the egress or entrance driveway, that's all put in the plans ahead of time. They do that for all projects.
Okay, so I just, so visually, it's on a hill, so, is the top of the hill being leveled for the, the monopole?
Uh, no, we're, we're working with the grade, that's, that's, the selection of the foundations types that we're using is meant to keep the grade as close to existing as possible.
So, pardon me, I just want to understand it conceptually. So, how's, how does the tower not be tilted, then?
Um, the Kason Foundation is a, is a drilled shaft that goes deep into the ground, think of it like a fence post. It, there's more than normal of a, or like a parking bollard, where half the bollard is in the ground and half is out of the ground. The deeper we go for the foundation, the more stable it is, so. The, this particular site would be a drilled shaft, and then poured concrete for the foundation, and the tower would be put on top of it.
Okay. It's hard for me to visualize. And so will the, and, and so the pads for the electrical work for the, each of the different carriers, those will be on a slant as well?
No, those, they're, they're, we, we don't know what the other carriers will propose at the site, but what we're suggesting as the initial installation would be on concrete piers, like you would have for a deck. You have a, a pier, and then it would have.
So you're gonna create, create like a deck, okay.
It would, yeah, it would be a platform that, that the rain could go through it, it'd be safe for the workers, a lot of places they do that for the employee's safety, so that they're not trudging around in the snow. And, uh, back to, back to the foundation type, like the, all the utility poles out on the right away, there's a, there's a rule of thumb that is 10% of the length of the pole plus two feet, so if there's a 40-foot pole out there, there, the pole is six feet in the ground and then 34 feet up, and so, and, and that was a, a recognized standard, so that's, we're, we're putting effectively the pole partially in the ground to keep it straight.
Okay. So, and then I just have a couple of questions directly about the application. My first question is, who is the applicant? There's two names. On the first page is the Tower Company, and then on like page three, it's AT&amp;T.
It's Wireless Edge.
So Wireless Edge is the applicant, so AT&amp;T is not.
No.
Um, and my second thing is, the way it's worded, I've read other, you know, permit applications, it says that you'll try to meet the standards of their permit, and, I mean, are there any variances? And if so?
I, I don't understand the question on this, so I, I, we want to be real clear on this, if we're trying to edge into something that we are, decided that we weren't talking about, we're not gonna go down that road.
I just, so I guess my, my question is, they, they say that they'll try to meet our standards.
They will meet our standards for the site conditions in the building, that's.
In your, your, your bylaw?
Correct.
So, are there any variances, is my question, to, to the Town of Milis bylaw for the planning board?
They have, they have more questions.
Yeah, not that we know of.
So, there are none?
No, there, there may be, but our application is for the planning board.
Right, but aren't you obligated to ask what we, what your variance is for?
Okay.
To put that on paper?
Uh, if the board gets that answer, I, you know, I think we'll need a variance for the fall zone.
Okay.
Um, and, other than that, I'm not sure if there's anything else, but.
That would be through the zoning board.
Exactly. So that would, that would be us.
The fall zone would be through the zoning board?
If we had to do a variance, it would be through the zoning board, yeah.
This board doesn't grant variances.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I'm a little less confused.
Okay, great, thank you, Peter. All right, anyone new that came in, if you guys could sign in, and just so everyone's aware, we've already walked through this before, that, just in case they're here for, I'm not sure what meeting you're here for, but we're discussing on the, the radio tower, specifically the site conditions, uh, here, so. Are there any other questions from the audience? All right, I make a motion to continue this hearing until our next meeting.
March 12th at 7:30.
March 12th at 7:30.
Second.
All right, motion's made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think we're all set. Town council's all set.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
If you have children, huh?
No, I got it, yeah.
Very little. They're already.
Um.
Thank you.
And I do want to, once again, if anyone is new in here, we have a sign-up sheet, we, you guys need to sign in, please. Oh, okay, I didn't see if I could, thank you. Uh, make sure you print, so Camille can read it. All right, great, thank you. All right. Okay, so.
Maybe we'll have a couple of minutes after eight.
All right, and, we are, yes, we are done. Yep, thank you, Mike.
See, that's when you stop being polite, and you go, uh, Rich, you don't need.
Yes, you have to remind me, occasionally I'll forget you're here.
That's a good thing. That means I'm not trouble. Have a good night.
All right, great, thank you.
Good night, Mike.
All right, next item on the agenda, slightly behind schedule, is the MBTA Communities Rezoning Act update presentation, a half an hour only, by John Cruz, who we hear is very efficient and prompt.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Jody Garzan, the, the committee chair of the MBTA Advisory Committee could not be here, so on behalf of the committee, I would like to introduce this board to John Cruz and to Alex Copelman, who are both from MAPC, they are both senior housing and land use planners, and are the consultants that are, the committee and the town are working with to sit in our new MBTA zoning, so they are here to give the board an update on where we stand in the process.
Right, and just so the folks in the audience know, just so they know what this is about, is that the, the state has passed a initiative, and it's requiring any community that is near the MBTA to create a, basically a housing plan, and Milis, because we're called a, oh, and I can't think of the term.
Adjacent.
Adjacent community, so meaning North Fork is close enough, we are, we are required to create that zone where the, the, which they'll describe, they'll be able to do different things on building in those areas. So, okay, go ahead, John, we're ready to, ready to go.
Thank you so much, Chairman Nichols, it's a pleasure to finally put a face with the name, and thank you, Nicole, for the wonderful introduction. My name is John Cruz, I'm with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. My colleague Alex Copelman is gonna go ahead and get started with the presentation tonight, and you'll hear from me in just a few minutes, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, thanks, Nicole, thanks, John. Alex Copelman, Regional Housing and Land Use Planner with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. If you're not familiar, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is the regional planning agency, we, for the greater Boston area, we serve 101 cities and towns, providing technical assistance for housing, land use, economic development, transportation, and all sorts of different things, so, the Town of Milis was awarded some state funding to pay for a study, and asked MAPC to provide assistance to help the town comply with the new state law, 3A MBTA zoning. Generally speaking, that law requires that Milis zone for allowing multifamily in, in a straightforward process, a byright process, and we're gonna talk about how we've approached the study, and some of the previewing of the regulations for you tonight. So, we're gonna get into a preview of those regulations, so we can get the board's input and feedback, and make revisions so that we can deliver a bylaw that will be ready to, to look at a spring town meeting. So again, we want to discuss with you the project to date, the progress on the project to date, the district boundaries that are being proposed, where the zoning would take effect, and the zoning regulations themselves, and then talk about the next steps. So, looking at this process, it's important to understand that it's been guided by a committee, as Nicole mentioned, we also have some other committee members with us tonight, Madeline is here, so this committee was driving the planning process by providing the, the local knowledge and insights to make sure that we were studying the area and making considerations and engaging with the community in that process. MAPC's role is more of a technical one, looking at the zoning in the area, looking at developments trends, infrastructure and constraints, facilitating public engagement, and ultimately making recommendations for the zoning. So, there's some of the committee members that have been guiding us through the process, and you can see that the process began last fall, and has been going on for roughly a year, and so we've done a, a good amount of research and engagement to lead up to this point, working with the committee through several meetings and having several points of engagement. Some of the engagement that we, we've done, we had focus group and, focus group meetings and interviews with town staff and board members to understand the zoning and, and different aspects that need to be considered in the process, met with the housing authority, developers to gather this information. Then we had a town-wide forum that was actually held around this time last year at the high school to establish a vision for where the zoning would go, and to look at some of the housing types that the residents of Milis would support through the zoning, to help us move forward with establishing where the district boundaries would be proposed, and then we followed up on that with a online open house survey, where we actually proposed some different zoning options for the public to consider, and this helped us further refine the draft zoning regulations that we're gonna be previewing for you tonight. Here's just a quick summary of some of the things that we learned, it was very clear that residents, as well as the committee that we were working with, would really like to see a lower density zone as much as possible, that will still comply with the requirements set by the state under this law. So, MAPC's done a lot of technical work to run the compliance model, to make sure all the numbers add up through the zoning to meet state standards, and based on this feedback, we tried to get the density as low as possible while still complying. And so, as a trade-off to that, having a lower density zone with smaller buildings of only four stories in height, required the district boundaries to be a bit larger, so that we could still hit the compliance numbers, and so that was a clear priority that we saw from the public and the committee, that we're okay with having a somewhat bigger district, as long as we can keep the density as low as possible, so that's the direction we headed with that. There was also strong support for adding affordability requirements into the zoning, which is something that's also being proposed, and, again, feedback really led towards locating the zoning in the town center. There was also some specific feedback asked for about the Ann and Hope site, and there was a lot of support for having mixed use, a combination of residential ground floor and, uh, sorry, commercial ground floor and residential above on that site, so we also considered that in the proposal. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to John, who's going to go over a preview of the proposed district boundaries and regulations, so he can get your input on that tonight.
Thank you so much, Alex, and what I'd like to remind the board of tonight is, I'm in for the public as well, this is not a public hearing, this is not something that we are looking to adopt or adopt with conditions or anything like that, what we hope to do is gather your feedback on both the process and where we've landed to date, see kind of just what general thoughts you all have about it, what kind of feedback we can do, as we're working to refine this bylaw and make it as good as we possibly can, before we move the process on a little bit further. So, what I'd like to show you guys is this map right here, this is kind of the meat and potatoes of the, the whole situation, and like Alex said, we found ourselves in a situation where we said, we want to be able to comply with all the requirements that the state has put forward, and in order to do that, we have to meet density requirements and space requirements. What we heard very loud and clear from the public, from the committee, from everyone we talked to, is that we want to be able to keep this town, and to keep the character as close as we can to what people know and love about Milis. And I think you said something earlier, Chairman Nichols, during the gas station conversation about not wanting to make downtown glitzy, that's exactly the approach that we took to this as well. And what we ended up with was realistically four separate districts per se, realistically, with the way that the regulations are done, is that District 1 is in orange, that's comprised of three separate areas, and then District 2 is the purple area, and District 2 is essentially the Ann and Hope site and the surrounding parcels that are not currently part of the MCEOD, the existing mixed-use overlay, and the idea is that this would expand upon that mixed-use overlay to allow for more required mixed-use in the area. What we are suggesting is that this would be a overlay district, essentially two overlay districts with two different sets of regulations, both of which very, very close, and it would give a lot more opportunity, as Alex said, to be able to streamline the process for byright development, while still complying with what the state wants. When we look at the regulations table, we see that there is not a whole lot of variation from what's existing in the current zoning bylaw, we have minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet, we have an 80/20 ratio on the, the lot coverage to open space, we keep the existing floor area ratio that's currently in the bylaw. We took a look at the, the parking, and this was a, a big part of conversation with the committee that put this together, and they wanted a lot of flexible parking options around the Ann and Hope site, and after having conversations with the EOHLC, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, we had conversations with them, we looked at your existing bylaws, and we felt that there is a, a lot of good flexibility in bylaw, the, the parking section of your bylaw under Section 8, where those regulations would apply under District 2, that would allow for a little bit more flexibility around things like shared parking in areas that have both commercial and residential. Setbacks, very similar to what currently exists, and the building height, we limit to three stories and 35 feet, going up to 45 feet in areas that have mixed use with ground floor commercial, because we recognize a lot of times, um, commercial tenants just need a little bit more space for their showrooms and things like that. We also capped the maximum dwelling units per acre at 15, which is directly in compliance with what the state mandates, that, um, we have to be at 15 units per acre or more, and we really hope that this is a good representation of what everybody wants to see for the town moving forward, and we think that we've taken a, a really good look at what everyone has come out and told us, and we've tried to turn it into policy that is as close to the existing regulations as possible, while also allowing everybody to comply. We also have some affordability requirements that we're working on, that are not represented in these slides, we heard loud and clear from the public that they do want to see as much affordability as we can on this site, and we heard the same thing from the committee, we think that we're gonna be able to hit a 15% requirement at 80% AMI. We think that we're going to be able to hit a 15% requirement at 80% AMI for eligible tenants. We don't think we're going to be able to get 20. We don't think the financial models on that are going to work, but we're having our finance person go through and look at all that stuff right now. The next steps in this process, after we hear from you all tonight, we're going to refine the zoning by law. We want to hear what you have to say. We welcome your conversations, your criticisms, your critiques. We're going to start preparing support materials for town meeting. We're working on the economic feasibility for the affordability requirements that I just mentioned, and do all the steps that we need to for the final compliance with EOHLC. And that includes putting together a packet, sending materials out. They have a whole laundry list of stuff, as you can all imagine, that we have to submit and make sure everything is on the up and up. Dot all the i's, cross all the t's, all that good stuff. That is it for our presentation. Bob made sure that we try to keep this as on point as possible, and we know that you all appreciate that. So, happy to have a conversation moving forward, and we have some other supplemental material we can pull up if that's helpful for the conversation as well.
All right. So if I can bring up something upfront. So we looked at, to get this onto the, onto our schedule for the spring town meeting, which is what you guys want to do.
Correct.
Okay. So, to get that done, we need the final version, written and approved by the town council with a proposed complete by law and proposed zoning map due to the planning board on or before Thursday, February 15th. Okay? So that means we have to have the whole thing here.
Okay.
So, and it has to have time for town council to review, which obviously it can't be, you know, at the last minute. They have to have, you know, some lead time to get that through.
Okay.
So, you know, it's kind of putting the onus on you guys to get this stuff.
We will move quickly.
Underway, right. That would be in order for us to have a public hearing to be held on March 12th, which would be our next meeting.
Okay.
And so, also, we probably, because we could look at that internally. So whenever you guys get that out, we could, you could send that out. We could just look at that internally in the, in the planning board. We can't review and, you know, we can't have a.
It has to be in public, yeah.
We can look at to see the same thing that jumps out at it. And the other thing is, could you explain to the folks at home, which I didn't bring up? Basically, we're creating zones with specific building types and regulations. We're not requiring anyone to build them. We're just giving the opportunity if a developer came in and said, hey, we want to, you know, build, I want to build a, I want to build a four store, a four story, or, sorry, 45 foot high, you know, building in downtown Millis. We are providing them an area to do that, correct?
That is correct. There is no obligation for anybody. Really what this does is it gives all the property owners that are highlighted on this map, an additional set of regulations to work with if they so choose. There is no mandate for anyone to do actual development. There is no mandate on the town to provide anything like that. There's certainly nothing that does anything of the sort. So this is just telling property owners, if you would like to develop under these regulations, you can. It does not change the existing underlying zoning districts, be they RVC, RT, whatever it might be. All of that stuff will still exist as well.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Just for everyone out in the audience and anyone that's listening, Millis already has zoning concepts similar to this. They're called overlay districts. We currently have the MCEOD, which is the, the economic overlay district that goes from, effectively goes from Plain Street, I believe.
It's all the stuff that's right in here.
And it runs along either side of one, of Main Street, and what that zoning district allows is for multi-use. You can have commercial on the bottom, residential on top. The majority of that zone happens to be all commercial property, which as commercial property would not allow for residential zoning. This overlay district, as we have, allows that other option, but it doesn't change the underlying zone from being commercial. It doesn't take that away. This three, this multifamily zoning would be handled by the town in the same way. You'll see, if you look on these maps, a lot of this is in residential areas. Those would remain residential, single family residential property. There would be an overlay, which would allow property owners the ability to also do multifamily. It's not taking anyone's underlying zoning. It's not changing that. So whatever your home is now, it's not taking that away. You don't have to change anything. It's just providing options so that we comply with state law.
And the way that we designed this district is that you can see on this map, the blue areas, which is the, the mixed use MCEOD district. We don't want to step on that and provide multiple overlays and have things get a little bit too complicated. So the way that this is designed is that it complements the existing mixed use district and just kind of expands it down past the Ann and Hope site and up Main Street a little bit. We had a question specifically on the online survey that we sent out to the town, and there was very strong support. We asked people, what do you want to see at the Ann and Hope site? And the biggest thing that they said they wanted to see was mixed use.
And then one other comment on that is the, is the parking, because that was one of the concerns, is that according to the, the new zoning, they took a lot of the requirements for required parking spaces away. So you talked about shared spaces. So that means that tentatively, you could put in a mixed use. So there would be a, it could be a ground floor dentist office, but you could have apartments above it. You could have three floors of apartments above it, but you wouldn't necessarily require each apartment to have a parking spot. They would have shared parking. So we could tentatively, you know, we could get in, and this is by the state, you could get into the position where there's not enough parking and they'd have to park elsewhere.
If there's not enough parking, they'd have to park elsewhere. That's something that would be figured out in the site plan review, and that's why we wanted to add that element that already exists in your by law to say, and essentially, so we're all on the same page here, thus on the board and everyone at home. The state said that if you have a mixed use district under this MBTA zoning, you can't have any parking requirements for the commercial side of the mixed use. You can have it for the residential side, and you can do shared parking. So that's why we took this approach. And this is something that would be worked through in the site plan, our review process.
Okay. So then, so on that, so we can have a requirement on, I'm just processing that, on the residential side, say they go ahead and build this. Okay? So we put in an apartment building and they have three apartments. They're, we could, in the regulation, they could be required to have three parking spaces for that location. However, the commercial, we wouldn't have that same requirement, meaning that the commercial on the ground floor would not be required to have any parking, or they, if they run out of parking, it's too bad?
That is correct, yes. That's why the shared parking is seen as the compromise here.
Okay. All right. Just so people understand, this is what was passed by the state. So, you know, that's something that we'll be having to deal with down the road. Because I read a little bit about it.
Yep.
Yeah, I could, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure the board is aware that the proposed regulations for parking in District 1, which is not the mixed use district, but everywhere else, would actually be looking at two space maximums instead of minimums. And that is just based on the best practice of, of understanding that requiring more parking spaces from developers can increase the, the costs of development and can make it difficult for products to pencil. There may not be enough space on a site to physically create the parking spaces. More impervious surface contributes to other issues like with stormwater runoff. And so, as a best practice, we're seeing in zoning regulations today to use maximums instead of minimums, but I assume that the board would have some opinions about that. So we wanted to make sure that you're aware of that and get any feedback you have on that.
Yeah. And so, I am aware of that. But, and so what the, what the state is saying is that we'll just go and we will jump on the T, which is in Norfolk. That's, that's their goal, is that it's a, you know, it's a accessible to, you know, MBTA. So that's, that's the way the state's going about it. And we need to, we need to create our by law because what the state has done with this is if you don't comply, basically, it's not a carrot and a stick. It's a stick and a stick on this. So they, they have proposed this, the whole by law, and if we don't comply, we'll be penalized, where they, we'll take away funding and a few other things. So really, the town of Millis has to put forward some, some sort of, you know, get this by law put forwards, and we're going to try to do it the best way possible for the town.
That's been our goal throughout this entire process as well. Well, you know, I'm going to be real with you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a really big believer in the idea that if you're not doing something, if you're doing something for somebody, but you're not doing it with them, you're doing it to them. And I sympathize greatly with this board and with this community feeling as though this is a mandate from the state that's coming down on top of you. It's been our job, the job of the committee, me, Alex, all the rest of our team at MAPC to be as sensitive to all of that as we can and to understand that, we understand that not everyone is going to like this requirement. I'm not here to advocate for it or advocate against it. I'm here exactly to be in that position that you said. If this is going to go through, we want to make sure that we listen to the community and we're doing it in a way that works for Millis.
Right. And just to be clear, I, I understand the whole concept of, you know, if we do need more affordable housing, this is one approach to do it. It, you know, it's, it's an interesting approach, and like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can, you know, between your committee and the planning board to, to make it fit the town, so. Were there any other questions from the audience or the board?
I just want to echo or tag along with what Richard said. You know, this plan was mainly devised for actual MBTA communities to increase density around commuter rail stations. The idea being that you need less vehicles. Problem is, we don't have a commuter rail station. We don't have any public transportation whatsoever. So you're going to increase the density in our town, and everyone's going to have to have a car, and they're all going to have to drive to Norfolk, and you don't have enough parking there as it is. It's just creating additional problems, putting a lot of burden on the town. I understand it for actual MBTA communities, but just to pile on adjacent communities, I want to make it every town, but if you're two towns away from an MBTA station, what's the difference?
Well, the difference explicitly is that MBTA communities are defined in state statute. There is, there is a law that was passed that lists them all out, and it is both communities that are served directly by the T and communities that may be or may not be indirectly served by the T. I understand what you're saying, and I understand the fairness argument to it from the perspective that we're working with. It's just there's a list. It's codified in state law, and if that was to change, it would need to be changed at the state level.
We didn't create the, the state requirements, but we, we are here to help interpret them and help you comply with them in a way that suits the town best. I will note that the classification as an adjacent small town for Millis does lower the density requirements compared to other communities. So, again, we, we designed the regulations to be most consistent with what the committee and the public told us while also making sure that we're complying with those density requirements.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I agree with you 1,000%. I will tell you all that Alex and John have been the messenger that has been shot multiple times. The advisory committee initially, especially in our first few meetings, to be fair, put them through hell because we were all of the same mind. Millis is small enough. We don't have the resources. We don't have the school resources. We don't have the police resources. We don't have the fire resources. We don't have the DPW resources. We don't have the resources to do what the state is shoving down our throats. And John and Alex don't work for the state, but they have, again, taken a brunt of what the advisory committee said and have really worked. They came back multiple times, and I mean, I will admit, I was the one that was saying, yeah, I don't like that. Yep, nope, that's not passing. That's not passing. That's not passing. That's not how we do it here. And having sat on this board for 12 years, they have been very open and have really worked hard to get what we have, what they've presented here, as close to our bylaws. And I will say, the, the shared parking is part of our by law. That is in here. So, as distasteful, and that will be my polite way of saying, as distasteful as this law is, that is being shoved down our throats, John and Alex have really worked with the town, with the committee, with the people that have come to these, the public hearings, the, the questionnaires. They've really worked very hard to listen to and take everything in that people are saying. And I also want to remind everyone that this is, in particular with the Ann and Hope, that property is still private property, and it's going to remain private property. What happens to it, you know, is, is out of the town's control as far as whether it is sold, but all of this applies to private property. So if no one wants to build any of this on their land, then the town doesn't, no one's going to be forced to do any of this. So, I just wanted to.
All good stuff. Can I just go ahead? One more, one more thing. Go ahead.
No, they still have four minutes.
So, with that question, you know, I speak to Bob about this constantly, so I know, and I've been watching all of this. Has there been any communication, maybe this is for the committee, has there been any feedback from the Ann and Hope property? I mean, because everybody says, oh, they want this all in Ann and Hope. We've done this. We've tried to, you know, encourage them to come into the town and, and, you know, the building's full. We know the building's full. Have they had any input in this or any feedback from them? So they.
Well, the Ann and Hope property owner has attended several of the, the committee meetings that are open to the public.
Right.
So they have been involved in that way. We have an indication that the property owner likes the idea of having more options of how to use their property, but that's, that's about how, how we have left it.
Because it's kind of surprising, and Nicole will probably remember, when we changed the zoning for that property, they, they were dead set against it.
Right.
They were adamant that they did not like the change that we made for that property. And they pretty much told us they'll continue to, you know, use.
Industrial use.
All right, guys. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we, did you have anything else to wrap up with? Are you good?
I, I think we're all set on my end. If you're set on your end, Mr. Chairman.
And you have the dates that we need that information by?
I have the dates, and we will get everything over to you as soon as we possibly can.
Okay. Good. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time tonight.
Thanks for your work.
Oh. Oh. No, I didn't realize there were more members of the committee.
Okay. So, all right. Next item. Does anyone in the board need a break? Are you guys all good?
I need a little.
Okay. We're going to take a quick, sorry, fair all you guys. We've been here for a little while. We're going to take a quick, we'll take a three minute break.
I know, it's my fault. Sorry.
We're back. Okay, everybody, we're back. So thank you for letting us have a quick little break. The next item on the agenda is a field change request, minor modification to special permit site plan 1105 Main Street, Alpaca Gas Station, proposed seating in Honeydew. Yep.
Do you have the, his request letter in your package?
So if you wanna, just go to the microphone and just let us know.
Hi, board member.
All right. So if you wanna let us know who you are and what you're looking to do, that would be great.
Yep, respected board member, I'm Jignesh Patel, and we just recently took over the Alpaca Gas Station by knowing that because there was the tables and chairs over there, so we knew, we thought it's already permitted and everything. But once we applied for the Mass Week permit and then we come, we came to know that this is not what's in the originally planned. And then Mike helped me out and he told me this is what you can do and he helped me to get to the board member with the small field change.
Right, so basically what it is for the people at home, the Honeydew Donuts that is in there, the gas station sold, this is the gentleman that bought it, and they had existing chairs and tables in, in the building but not out. So when he, when he bought the building, he wanted to put the chairs and tables out and realized that there was, when he went to apply for the license, I think it is to...
No, the tables and chairs was already there on the...
No, no, I understand that. They were already there. So, so basically, the, our decision to not have seating specifically put in that gas station area. So what he's asking for is, and how many chairs and tables did you have?
Two tables and, I mean, the two sitting table and the one table in the middle, so two.
So he's, he's looking for minimal tables so people could sit there and have a...
Yeah, people can sit like, pretty much, maximum eight people can sit over there.
Right, so that's, that's what he's looking for, for a, for a modification to the special permit, so. That sounds fine to me.
They're already there.
Yeah, they're already there, you know.
And I did see, the only thing we did, and I think you got the request, in the original permit, they had some, they had trees and things that were supposed to be planted there and due to the drought, some of them died. We did ask that you basically put the trees that were supposed to be there in the first place to replace those. That's the only request that we had, so, and you have to wait till the spring.
Yeah.
And it does look like you cleaned the site up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it looks 100% better.
We keep trying best, yeah, we're still gonna try more.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Any other comments from the board? No, I make a motion to approve the modification, field change, sorry, field change to the Alpaca Gas Station to allow what I, seating.
Proposed seating.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all in favor? Aye. All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, member.
And don't come back asking for, no, for the digital sideboard.
So like, tomorrow I can apply for the Commonwealth of the Week application or...
Camilla will have to send you.
I'll send Mike Canpetro a memo tomorrow morning and let him know.
Okay, thanks a lot.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and slightly behind schedule, Form A, Application Approval Not Required Plan for 151 Acorn Street, map 40 parcel four.
Thank you, sir.
Officer Stone?
Yes.
We can see.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dan American, Legacy Engineering, this is an A and R application for 151 Acorn Street. There are two parcels. One is the house, the existing home at 151 Acorn Street, and if you see, kind of above the house is a dashed line, that's the existing lot line. And then it extends down the right side and there's a 50-foot strip and there's a big piece of backland. And that was an unbuildable, or it is presently an unbuildable parcel, that piece of backland. So the owners would like to create Lot 3 for their daughter to build a house in. So what we've done is we've taken the total land area and divided it into two lots, Lots 2 and 3. Lot 2 will contain the existing house. It has much more than the required 125 feet of frontage and 25,000 square feet and it will have all the extra land area in the back to go with it. And Lot 3 will have the required 125 feet of frontage, 100 feet of lot width, and the minimum, more than the minimum of the 25,000 square feet of lot area, and also complies with the shape factor requirements. And the house will be back kind of where the Lot 3 designation is.
Is this on, just out of curiosity, is this on, would this have, is this on sewer or is this?
Septic, so the existing home has a septic, it's actually on the plan there to the left of the house. And then we perked Lot 3 with the Board of Health and it's passed.
Okay. All right, well, if it has the frontage and it has the square foot, I think, is there any other comment from the board?
So Dan, they'll let the second water service?
They will, yes.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve that A and R application for Lot 3 on Acorn Street.
2 and 3.
2 and, sorry, 2 and 3. As noted on Colonial Engineering, plan date January 21st, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good, thank you, Dan, appreciate it.
I'll leave the miles over here.
Okay, we'll get those, we can get those at the end of the night. Or do you wanna go to the board? Dan, are you leaving? Do you wanna stay through now?
I don't think I'm allowed to leave.
Okay, okay. All right, next item on the agenda is Acorn Place Senior Residential Community Extension Request. Okay, great, thanks. All right, go ahead, Mr. Cannon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Edward Cannon, on behalf of the applicant, and we'd just like to request an extension of the special permit. And I know that there was an as, partial as-built submitted just recently to the board, so I don't know if you wanted to have some time to review that, have peer review, review that and come back at another meeting so you could sort of consider those more fully, but otherwise we're happy to extend the special permit. There's a little bit of infrastructure work left to be done there, but not a lot.
Right. So my thought to the board is that we just get the as-built, we've been requesting that for a little bit of time. And if I hit the sheet. So the, the observation report was initially noted in October 29th, 2021, noted issues with infiltration basins. And then that there was an email from Legacy Engineering dated November 4th stating that they wanted to take the investigation of the basins. Beta did an assessment and on January 21st, 2022, say, that they then got back to Dan American. We get a letter from Dan American stating the modifications were dated, complete dated August 8th. So what I would say is, A, we just got that as-built. We want the engineer to review it. I would be willing to give you guys a 36-day extension, which would be to our next meeting to allow them to review it. I did ask also to have a, have a list made of any outstanding items that you know need to be done on the project, so we would have that also. And then when you come back on that, we would then review it again and consider another extension, just because we'd like to get this wrapped up on our end. That would be my thought to the board. So basically, we give them a 30-day extension for now. We get the as-built. Sorry, more than 30 days, sorry. We get the as-built reviewed. If there's any deficiencies or more information, we'd ask you to come back and then we would, you know, review it again at the next meeting. So that's, that's what I'm considering.
While they're here and while there's an audience that came here to hear this too, curious why it feels it needs a whole year, what's remaining to be done, and what are the implications if we don't extend it?
Well, that would be up to the applicant to answer that question, so Mr. Cannon to Alan's question. And if you didn't hear...
In terms of a year? Well, hopefully it won't take that long.
You're asking for a year, so it could have been done in three months. What's left to be done?
There's some road work and some side work done essentially.
It doesn't seem like that's a year's worth of work. What are the implications if the permit expires and the work isn't completed?
That's a question that I wouldn't be able to answer. I don't know that question. So what would, on your end, what would Ted, if we let it expire, what would, what would that do? Any specific?
So the, the town could proceed against the applicant, but the applicant doesn't really have much. So there's really not a lot to do there, except that the man behind the applicant, Mr. Fox, has said, on behalf of the applicant, that the work is gonna get done and so he's gonna make sure it gets done with or without the special permit. So he's asking for that and, you know, I don't know if you know the history of this site, but, you know, it's been through some litigation, lengthy, costly, extremely costly, unfounded, and, you know, that's cut into the time it's taken to complete this and the funds available to the applicant to complete this. But, so, you know, Mr. Fox, through other projects, you know, will raise the capital on his own to refund the applicant to get this done. He said he'll get it done, he'll get it done. So can't promise that it's gonna be done. So physically, sure, it could be done in less than a year, but you need money to get it done, so that's gonna take a little bit longer, so. Hopefully it won't take a year, asking for that, hopefully it'll be done in less time.
And with my, the way that I'm looking at doing it is if we give, you know, if we, if we can do it in bite-sized chunks, then, you know, if there's an incentive to have the special permit continue, you know, that would, that was my thought. Go ahead.
Does we have a bond?
No, it's not a, it's not a, there's no bond in this, 'cause it's, this is not a...
It's a private road?
It's a private road. This is not, so. I think, you know, for, personally, I think, you know, giving someone the chance to finish and avoiding any complications, you know, if there was any pushback, you know, I think that would be the, the best way to go, is give someone a chance to succeed. That's what I would do with limitations where we have, we do it in 30-day chunks. So that was, that was my thought.
So, you know, Mr. Chair, I think Alan asked the right question.
Mm-hmm.
I think the right question was asked correctly. And with, with no bond, is the homeowners association been...
Yep.
So they hear, it's up to the chair if he wants to hear from them, but that, I mean, I agree with the 36-day. Let's, you know, first find out, let's review this and let's find out for Melissa what's, you know, what, you know, if the applicant can't tell us what still needs to be done, she will.
Right.
And I think that, I'm sure the homeowners association wants, they probably know, but they wanna hear it from our peer review.
Right, right. So, well, we can let, 'cause there were representative from the homeowners association who wants to, on a limited basis, 'cause we, and you have to step up and identify yourself.
Sure. Isn't it ultimately up to them, being the homeowners association?
On...
Wait, yeah. Not a fair question.
Yeah.
I take that back.
And just so you know, I, you know, I wanna give you some leeway, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna go on for too long a time. So if you could give us the executive summary on this, it would be great.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Carden, I'm the president of the Acorn Place Board of Trustees. We do have a list of what the items we think need to be completed. We took some pictures yesterday. We have packages here if your planning board is interested in seeing that. Just wanted to point out that some of our residents have been living in a construction zone for over four years. The majority of residents have been living in a construction zone for two to three years. There's work that needs to be done, right? Every time it rains, some of the roadway becomes a flood zone. The area in our Phase 2 central area currently looks like a moonscape and we, you know, the thing we want most of all is for the work to be completed as soon as possible. We obviously support an extension of the special permit, but we think a more time-limited extension is warranted. Well, I think we haven't had a chance to talk about it. We like the idea of going month to month and then judging progress and that's what we wanna see, is just continual progress in the project to be completed. That's the only thing that the residents really are focused on at this point.
Okay. All right, that was, my, my thought is that, you know, we wanna wrap this thing up. I think everybody wants to wrap this thing up. So my thought was, you know, the way to succeed is, succeed is that we, we go for the, we go for the 36 days to our next meeting, we see where we're at and we get a plan together and, you know, we could move on from there, so.
If that works for us.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in agreement.
All right, any else on the board have any comments?
I think so.
Go ahead, George.
Should we accept the package from these folks?
Yeah, we can put that into, into our record if you want to. I mean, you know, just so you know, we, we had another group came in, yeah, and, you know, we only look at things that are under our purview, which are, you know, road, basin, there's not a lot of other items that we...
Right, these are the infrastructure items based on this original special permit and...
Yeah, that's right.
Right, I, just to be clear, we have a good working relationship with Mr. Fox, so we're not being, trying to be adversarial.
No, and I just wanna let you know, I mean, it's just, there's, there's things that we're allowed to look at, there's things we're not allowed to look at, and we're gonna look at the things we're supposed to and, and that's it, so. Okay, so thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it. I make a motion that we grant the applicant a 30, an extension to our next meeting, which is 36 days if I am correct.
Extension to March...
March 12th, yeah.
Second.
Yeah, all right.
Alan seconded that?
Yeah, Nicole did.
Nicole did.
All right, motion's made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, we'll see you on the 12th.
Could we please get peer reviews, comments, or list of work ahead of time? That would be great.
No, as soon as they, we got it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's already been gone.
Yeah, thank you.
How about 7:45?
7:45. We try to get this stuff done.
That's good. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Okey-dokey.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, good evening.